Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our 2019 February 13 meeting. And it's a, well, tri-board meeting, but we have a representative. We have Amy Fiden-Kevich here from the Finance Committee. And we have Superintendent Anne for our select board, from our school committee, to represent them so we can get into our meeting tonight. We're doing the budget presentation and doing our annual town meeting closure and review. So we'll start with the budget presentation.
Okay. You have before you the budget proposal for FY 2020. It represents a balanced budget using estimated revenues and recommended expenses. It achieves the goals set out by the board selection. I'll write those in a little bit. In order to understand some of the decisions that I had to make in order to put together a balanced budget for FY 2020, we have to remember how we got to the balanced budget at that point in 2019. And if you remember, at the time, we brought on aboard an ambulance service which relied on more free cash than we had originally planned to spend. We had a balanced budget going into budget season with $125,000 of free cash. With the addition of the ambulance service, we had to bump that up to nearly $400,000 of free cash. In order to make that expenditure of free cash possible, we had to alter the way that we looked at our OPEB. And what we did is we did a one-time transfer from stabilization of about $263,000 to fully fund our OPEB and keep us on target. So all in all, that's a lot of ground to catch up on. What catch-up we did. Our revenues for FY 2020 projected to show an increase in revenue by $568,000. Our state aid, net, take all the ins and outs, assessments and offsets, and see a $200,000 increase there. That's a very generous increase in state aid. And that's something to watch as we move through the budget season and see what the legislature does to the governor's budget proposal. Local receipts amount to about $340,000, and it includes two new revenue streams for the first time. First of all, ambulance rebate. Right now, based upon six months of data, our ambulance looks like it's going to exceed our expectations in terms of revenue, both revenue from patients as well as the town contribution. And we could see a rebate of $112,000. And if you've been down to the old Sanoco Station in the last couple of days, you can see that they're renovating it, so the medical marijuana facility is being constructed with a target date of sometime in May. We have a host community agreement with them which says they ought to pay us $50,000 in the first or second quarter of FY '20. So there's an additional $50,000. Revenues from enterprise funds of $73,000. So that's a total of, not adjusting for the enterprise funds, of $1.2 million of new money on the table.
Where are you reading from, David? Or is it from the book?
Yeah. I'm summarizing.
Oh, I guess we're going to follow along with the non-episode page.
If you go to...
He didn't sit in his head.
Well, yeah, I had a lot of that to this.
If you go to the FY 2020 revenue and expenditure summary, it has the details there. Revenues in the general fund of $18.79 million, and expenses of $19,374 million, leaving a shortfall of a little bit more than half a million dollars. We're using free cash for one-time expenses of $339,000. And then free cash for the recurring expenses. We had reset the base level. We were at 125, we're now 300, almost 400,000. Our policy is to reduce our reliance by $75,000 per year until we reach zero. I'm being aggressive in this budget. I'm reducing our reliance by $133,000. And it says $235,000 going to recurring revenue, recurring revenue expenses within the omnibus budget, a little higher than I'd wanted it to be, but that's what I can do. And then there's some minor adjustments to the budget which bring us to a balanced budget in the general fund.
So David, what are you using as an estimate of free cash total?
I'm using $650,000 free cash as an estimate. I think that's a safe and conservative number.
So there would be some accessibility.
Yeah, I'm projecting that there will be a surplus again according to the select board's policy that you wanted a surplus of $75,000 of free cash to be applied to capital. So using this budget recommendation, we achieved that $75,000 of surplus.
So based on the summary that you just provided, just a couple of things that I've heard. So the medical marijuana number is a little somewhat speculative at this point, right?
That's much more solid than the ambulance rebate.
Well, the ambulance rebate for sure, because that's based on the six months, and then Michael Baranca hasn't taken a look at that. So that could live around. And then state aid could be impacted by whatever the House and Senate call it.
Absolutely. These numbers are very likely to change as we get further into the state budget process.
And how, with the other revenue line items, how aggressive do you feel that you've been as more in line with...
They're based upon six months estimates, so it's revenue projections through December. I haven't seen the January revenue projections yet, so as soon as I do and as soon as we have more data, we can get a little closer to what the number should be.
It's one of the things that we've done the past couple of years is we had a financial management team, so making sure there's representation from the Finance Committee, Dan Sedan, Susan, and Linda recommend a revenue figure to work with. So have they chimed in on any of that yet, or...
No.
So you could probably do that sooner rather than later, just make sure it's comfortable with the revenue.
So the enterprise funds, we have revenues of about $2 million, expenses of $2.1 million. Leaving a shortfall of $24,000, which is made up for by the reserve accounts, $10,000 for water, $10,000 for sewer, and $4,825 for cable TV reserves, which brings us to a So the expenses, okay, so looking at the goals of the select board. Goal one was the Human Resources Department. Budget number 152 is the Human Resources Department. It consists of a director, a benefits coordinator who's Joan Gusto, and she's seat assignment would be in that room still, but her pay will be coming out of the Human Resources Department. And there's money for usual expenses customary for the Human Resources, so dues, travel, professional development, that kind of stuff. Goal 2.1, redeployment of administrative support staff within the town hall. We transferred five hours of clerical support from the select board to the tax collector. And I'll come back and talk a little bit about the nuances of doing that. And reclassified the Assistant Tax Collector as a Water and Building and Water and Sewer Billing Coordinator. Transferred five hours from the building Inspector Clerical Assistant to the Treasurer, and reclassified that at a higher-order function of Assistant Treasurer. We supplemented with Senior Tax Workup Program, and there's a stipend in the budget for interns. So with that, we hope to achieve a higher levels of support and allow for higher-level functions of the Tax Collector's Office, Treasurer's Office. Goal 2.2, the Finance Director function is achieved by adding five hours to the Treasurer. So it goes from 35 hours to 40 hours per week. Goal 2.3, interns in Senior Tax Workup Program. Goal three is to maintain a sustainable public safety service in FY 2020, so there are very limited cuts in those departments where you see a recommended reduction in budget like there was the idea of keeping our public safety service sustainable throughout this four-year.
So real quick question on the town hall budget issues. Obviously, this is the year for general government, so did we kind of squeeze in everything that we needed to do as far as Molly put the goals objective in town hall? I mean, obviously, we just got this, so...
Yeah, I mean, I think we've touched on everything, but I believe in MIT, you know, Finance Director, so I think we're making inroads, if I can put it that way.
Yeah, I wish I could do more with this budget, but based upon what I have right now, I think I've pushed it as far as we can reasonably expect to go. Goal 4.1, review and annually Water and Sewer Rates to maintain those enterprise funds. Goal 5.1, support the operational physical needs of the departments displaced by the demolition of old senior centers. So you'll notice there's a lot of renovation going on in this town hall. There's been adjustments to the budget in order to make sure that these displaced departments are adequately supported so they can maintain their functions. Goal 6.1, this has to do with annual OPEB contributions. We're raising FY 2.5% in order to keep track of our annual contribution targets. 6.2, just talked about this, we'll restart our reliance on free cash to fund recurring expenses within the operating budget in accordance to the select board's free cash policy. 6.3, we'll use excess free cash and certified in the summer, anything above that 650 number to replenish the stabilization account for $263,000 if possible.
Hey David, I don't need to interrupt you. Do you have another copy of this over? I just am missing the pages. Thank you. Oh, no, this one has it, so I'm good. And I'll just send that back.
The Fleming?
Yep, sorry. Thank you. I don't need your book choice.
No.
Thank you. I got it. Okay, this makes it easier to follow along. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you.
So just to...
Are you in the same boat?
Yeah, he's missing you.
Here, try this one. And this is available online on BoardTalks, by the way.
Yeah, that'll make much more sense, though.
All right, so just to sum up, this was a very, very tough budget. I had to make a lot of decisions that are going to be unpopular. A lot of departments made many recommendations and requests that are entirely reasonable, and in a perfect world, with enough cash, we should be supporting them. I, however, did not have that luxury, and I had to make cuts wherever I could. Cuts to budgets, cuts to requests, and those cuts amount to about $350,000. So there's a lot not to like in this budget, but it is balanced.
David, can I just ask a question? I'm just speaking at the ambulance. So if we...
What page is that, Molly?
So this year, and I know, again, we just went on record and said it's squishy, but we contracted NFY 19 for a price tag of $267,000. And it's possible that we're going to get a rebate. I'd say it's probable we're going to get a rebate, just to touch on what that rebate might be. But just for the sake of argument, let's say it winds up being $100,000. And for the record, that will actually bring the cost of the ambulance service below the proposal that we got from Amherst, too. But in the FY '20 budget, you have what looks like the full contractual amount of 282.
Yep.
So is it possible that that might be something less than that?
Do you agree with the same?
I mean, wouldn't we assume that we would...
You would leave it the same? John?
Yeah, if there's going to be that much of a return, well, why would you...
But what would that be like, taking the school and putting the credit we get from the estates and the assessments we've got to pay to combine them in one and say it's a net of...
Well, it's only $15,000, but looking for a place to start squeezing.
Well, where I was going was in... So are we assuming that next year, so if we're putting the full expense amount in here for the contract, which is right, that's the right way to do it, I think, but somewhere else in the revenues, are you showing that we might also get a rebate next year as well?
Yeah, so I have that money coming due to us in FY 2020 for $112,000. The following...
Right, so the following year that we would get the next round?
Yeah.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
And where's that money going?
It goes to the general fund. Any other questions?
No.
Just got this.
I have a question on the fire department, but I don't know if this is where we want to talk about it now. I know we're just getting into the budget now. Mike had put in for clerical work, 18 hours a week, and he had moved a couple of accounts around so that it didn't cost the fire department anything to reinstitute that 18 hours. And you somehow took that away, the 18 hours, the clerical work, and took the money that he was saving and had moved around in his accounts and took it out of his budget totally. So we need to talk about that.
Yep.
And I just wanted to bring that to your attention because it wasn't anything added. It was just money that was already in the accounts. So I guess we'll just have further discussion on that.
Absolutely. It's one of those very reasonable requests that I simply couldn't support with the money that I had.
But it's not anything that was being asked for extra. But we'll talk about it. It's not an argument of discussion.
The chief has already come to see me, by the way.
Okay, so, well, I know, but I just wanted people to be aware that that was one of the things, so there was no move around. There was move around the money and put, you know, line items.
So just as a general question, then, kind of related to that, so Mike already obviously spoke up, but have all of the department heads been notified yet where there's an adjustment? Or you're presenting, what's the process we're following? Are you giving, making this public for the first time?
I'm making this public for the first time. Everybody's going to get a copy of it. It's posted online.
Yep. But then will you be interacting with the various department heads?
I shall.
And fielding complaints?
Okay, before everybody starts calling us and complaining, then let's review this so that we go through his speech here, and then we can start discussing.
Yeah, exactly. So we just want to make sure everybody knows where we're at in the process.
Right, and the Finance Committee will have a goal at it.
And we could set up times for them to come in after.
Yeah, so that was one of my questions for the board and the Finance Committee is how do we want to review these numbers? Last year, the select board said, let's give that task to the Finance Committee to me with the department heads, and then if there's any areas of disagreement, let's focus it on that.
Yeah, I think we had talked about it, kind of the conference committee, to iron out the differences between what you're proposing and what they're asking for, and then thinking kind of, you know, we could be the neutral party that's, I guess, deciding because maybe you created the budget, they have an issue with it, and then bring it in front of either us or the, a group of us from the Finance Committee, from the select board, and then, you know, make that decision whether we need to cut elsewhere or maintain that or what.
Yeah, because we have, you have to forego the department head meeting, right?
Yeah.
You reschedule this for...
March 6.
All March 6, so now we have a few weeks. Will this be brought up at that time? Are we going to delve into this ahead of time?
I was going to delve into it beforehand.
Okay.
Because it may feel like a long time to town meeting, but it's actually pretty short, you know?
And we have two sides of the equation. It seems like we need to have, I forget what you call it, it's not the Finance Committee, but the...
Conference Committee?
The Financial Committee, is that what it's called?
Oh, the Financial Management Team.
Financial Management Team needs to get together to get kind of a sign-off on the revenues, correct?
Right.
And then we need to do something on the expenses side to see if those line up.
So the revenue side could happen fairly quickly, I would think, right?
I just, if we can do that sort of conference meeting, whatever we want to call it, that way there is no, you know, last-minute claims before town meeting like we had last time of saying, well, I didn't know about this, and then, well, this way they, everybody has their chance to, you know, make an appeal.
Beforehand.
Right.
So do we have that formed yet, or is it...
No, no, I mean, I don't think we were talking about it before the special town meeting, so I don't know how we would form it or what it would be made up of, but... Does the Finance Committee want to have their own independent review?
I think we could do it, like, just, we have hard enough times sometimes making the quorum or making enough. So, I mean, we don't have a problem with having it, but definitely does not have to be just us. We welcome it to be jointly.
Right, so why not have some representation from the select board participate?
Maybe at a Finance Committee meeting, the select board comes, some representation from the select board comes and attends your meeting, and that's...
Either that, or we both do it together at the table.
Yeah.
You know, we can do it just jointly. We're not voting on anything, we're just listening at the time, so there's no vote, right? So could we just do it jointly?
Well, I think the idea was to not, to not have all of the departments coming, to try to make it more efficient. Because what we did in the past was we had...
One or two a night or something.
Yeah, like, for, like, every meeting for a while, we have multiple departments coming through, and then it was kind of shoved into the normal agenda. So we asked for the, we kind of gave them short shrift a lot.
Yeah, I wouldn't put it with a, with a select board meeting because you have too much, too many other things going on. When we did it, it was purely just for that. So if we were doing public safety, it was just public safety. That's all we talked about. It was just them, we pulled them right up to the table and let them discuss whatever they wanted to discuss. And listen.
Well, I was thinking, I don't know if we could do one extra meeting to vote to it, or do something like you're talking, but then, and not have, I don't want the department heads to come here and go over their whole budget with us. We just want to talk about the one or two sticking points, something that was cut and that's an issue, or something they didn't get. That's going to be a showstopper for the coming year, and that way hopefully we're not spending a ton of time on it.
Well, we know budget time takes extra meetings anyway, so we could certainly designate, you know, starting in March. We have a meeting February 27th, but maybe another meeting in March, too, that we have people come in just for that meeting alone.
You mean, start the process February 27th?
Yeah, we have, what are we doing, February 27th?
Senior Center contract.
Contract.
General contract or contract.
I mean, then on the 27th, I believe.
I am, I will be super speedy. But we can start the meeting at 6 o'clock, right, to tack on some time?
I will be here somewhere.
6:30, you want to make one?
Yeah, make a big little monkey.
We could do a 6:30 because that seems a little bit more convenient.
6:30.
Yeah.
We said the 27th is 6:30 right now, but...
We did say that.
Yeah, we did say that.
So that would be fine. So we could add on...
Is 6:30 good for all of you guys?
So are we doing, is that what we're doing? We're going to just have the one meeting for all the departments that come in one at a time?
Do you want to do it by division?
That's what I would think.
We would do it by division last time. Sometimes they want to talk a lot, sometimes they don't have much to talk about at all.
Right, but to David's point, to David Phil's point, we don't want to walk through every single night.
We didn't want to walk through, but we really love him. If they had something to vent.
But I think we just need to make it clear that this is their one shot, and then that, you know, the night before town meeting, we don't want to be hearing about, well, I didn't know about this.
Or we don't want to have...
Yeah, well, I guess, yeah, it's a listening session. We hear what they have to say. We're not making any guarantees, but we hear it and we put it on a list, and then...
In other words, we're not going to make any other decisions on town meeting floor this year that weren't already talked about a bunch of times. So at least we can make that clear ahead of time.
So I'm sorry, what was the date that you were...
27th will start.
27th of February?
And then the Financial Management Team might meet?
Hopefully before then?
Before then?
To go over the revenue?
So on the 27th, are we looking to do it on every Wednesday or something until you get through, on Wednesdays before?
An extra Wednesday of the month?
Oh, the extra. So are you going to have a regular meeting, too?
Not that night, no.
No, but just be, just focused on just that.
Just budget.
Just budget.
But it'll be posted as a regular meeting, right, or a regular select board meeting?
It'll be a select board meeting, but budget.
Okay.
With finance in, whoever...
And whatever else gets thrown in there.
Well, we're going to try and keep it at that. We'll keep our other two meetings for other business, and just really one meeting a month to just designate for the budget time.
Okay.
And departments.
And do you want to meet with the General Government Division because that's got the most moving pieces in this budget?
I would say so.
Start with that.
I would, that's the biggest one. The rest of them are, should be not as...
Decisions made about general will sort of drive everything else.
That would be fine.
So that would be town hall and fire?
No, 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 public safety is just one.
Public safety, they're out.
Okay. See, I mean, that would be, so you have the, so the big ones, or you got the, I mean, public safety probably won't be a big one this year, but you got the town government is going to be a big one, and the school.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Why stays open? Will you just send an email out to the department heads then, maybe, and just, like, tomorrow, and just let them know, you know, in case you're not already aware, some of them are watching right now anyway, in case you're not already aware, the draft budget proposal is available online?
Yep.
Just so, because again, sometimes we've had, oh, I just saw it for the first time, and no one told me that...
They'll give a hard copy of the boxes as well.
All righty, let's go, is that it for the budget right now?
It's for the budget, and how long is the town meeting?
Town meeting warrant, it's asking for a closure of town meeting warrants tonight. Maybe we want to make a motion?
Can we make a motion to close the town meeting warrant?
Second. And we'll do discussions.
Well, second, and then I'll second it. It says town meeting closure and review. Are we walking through it?
I can touch on the articles.
How many articles?
Well, I mean, is there anything new, I guess, is like...
We're not going to touch on everything.
Is there anything new from what we've already seen?
Yeah, so the new things, there are a couple of new things. All right, so the first new thing is the omnibus budget and enterprise funds. I talked in the previous preview of the warrant that we were handling, and four articles were now handled, and two, we did some more gaming on this, and we were able to consolidate general fund and the enterprise funds into two articles rather than four. Article 12, the Acceptance of Unclaimed Properties statute, this is a housekeeping article that's new. Article 14, Privateity Detailed Revolving Fund, that's $19,000. This may be deferred to the small town meeting without harm. This is for police details. There's often a lag between payment...
We're in the hole.
Yeah, we're always in the hole.
We're in the hole with that, they don't pay on time.
No, the problem we ran into was when they did the first, the second section of Route 9 here, there was tons and tons of hours that weren't paid on time.
Correct.
And they wanted to expand that, right? Yeah, so if we could have a larger seed...
They're not going to be coming up against that again, so...
I know, we're going to be, we're going to be working right into it.
And it's not like the money doesn't come back.
No, the money comes back, but it just needs to be there.
It's timing.
Exactly.
I don't, I mean, I don't see why we couldn't do it on Friday, I don't know.
I don't see why not either.
Just a matter of funding nineteen thousand dollars.
Funding, okay, we'll wait and see.
Well, we just, well, we just found fifteen in the universe. Again.
Okay, we'll consider that, we'll see, can leave it for now.
All right, articles, articles sixteen through twenty-two, there's seven CPA articles. We have twenty-three is the sidewalk snow removal general bylaw. Then we have.
You're gonna leave that in there? I thought we were taking that out, yeah.
You're taking it out, you told me to put it in.
Yeah, we told them to put it in, why would we be taking it out? We're gonna be in there, have discussion on it before we move it. Let's leave it until we discuss. Cuz we were talking about down at the other end there, we're not gonna be plowing the sidewalks down there on, in front of the walls.
Like I said, I really like to see.
So we need to have a discussion.
I'd really like to see what the lawyers got to say, the state's got to say, who's gonna be liable for it.
All right, so let's leave it for now till we have further information.
Okay, so a couple of articles related to Dolph marijuana.
Smoke on.
Planning, planning board is working on an MS four stormwater zoning bylaw. And there are three requests for zoning issues. One is an acceptance of the private wave, Megan's wave.
Where's that, David?
That's up by Hilltop.
No, I'm, I'm sorry, no, where is, where is it on the, what article?
That's twenty-seven.
Oh, there's no twenty-seven on that.
It just, it just got here, it's in. Yeah, it just, just came in today. It's the second one on tonight's agenda.
Gotcha, yeah, I saw the Megan's wave letter, okay.
It says not on the docket.
Not on the docket, yeah.
There is a request from the building inspector to redo the zoning bylaws having to be signed. A request for senior overlay district amendment to extend it for a parcel north of the bike path.
Oh, is that last one?
This is for the senior just overlay district, senior housing overlay district. There's a section at the center of town that is supportive of senior housing.
Okay.
There is a parcel north of the bike path in Middle Street that somebody's suggesting that we should extend the district to include that parcel.
And you said, the building inspector was asking for, yeah, what about signage?
Yeah.
So does the planning board know, or?
By law, we have to send all of this to the planning board anyways, so if they don't know, they will.
But, okay, so they know they are already aware of it or not?
I can't recall.
But they'll let us know.
I'll take that as a no.
We'll wait for their detail on what that details.
And then the final one is article thirty, that's for petitioned article to address concerns about the Massachusetts state flyer. The copy of it is right there.
Do you have a chair question?
Sure.
Placehold removes, is that ten, under capital, the placeholder, the school's placeholder, would that be that ten?
That'd be the number ten.
Ten capital, that's funny.
Univens and the.
Potential estimate of the locker room.
The girls locker room, yeah, they're both in there.
Okay.
Chamora.
Internet.
Who property is that we're talking about that wants to extend it to, which property are we looking at?
I'll have to dig up that detail, I just got it just before, before four o'clock.
Is it Middle Street, or is it River Drive, or is it East Street? Where, where are we looking at that?
I think it's Middle Street.
Middle Street? Because that's River Road, if you go down to Skawzies. Oh, middle.
Not their, their house, not their land.
Okay.
Yeah.
You mean the one right on.
They just put.
Can you fix that line?
I know, I know.
We're zeroing it out.
Yeah, I know where you mean that.
It'll be a tour.
It's across the street. I'm trying not to distract.
I'm trying to get my head in, into this, where it is, okay, I got it now. Um, okay. Anything else on the town warrant, for anybody?
That's it.
All right, motion to close the warrant?
Did we second?
We did a motion and seconded it.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is carried and the warrant is closed. All right, it's five after seven and I guess we'll go into. Dr. Mackenzie, would you like to add anything to the?
Oh, no, I, one, I wanna, excuse me, I will say this sincerely, thank you. I know, I will say from the school department's side, we had a lot of unfortunate, right now what looked like unexpected and unfortunate conditions in terms of discontinuation of grants. And the request that we sent over was really challenging to work with. I had forewarned Hopkins that they heard a blood curdling screen, it was probably just a town administrator and he'd probably be fine. And we're worried about it, we're sending emails. And so I know that's challenging, I appreciate the work that all of you all do in making these recommendations and decisions. And the school department side, it's, it's David though, it's just like what he's doing, is it's, we don't have a lot of time before town meeting, but it's really very early when you think about what you actually know for the, for the coming year. There's a lot of good dates that we pay attention to in terms of finance and we don't, all we have is the governor's budget.
Yeah.
So we have a, we have a ways to go, but thank you very much for all your hard work and for taking the requests of the school department seriously to all of you. And thanks to the town and the finance committee. The school department is keenly aware, all of its employees, how supportive you are of the schools, and we really appreciate it. So thank you. And I hope when I have that, they'll bring you better news next time. Now, I'm gonna go to a grant meeting, I'm gonna buzz out.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for what you do too, we appreciate it.
Happy to, it's a great place to work with the best DPW and cleaves roads in town. I won't tell you where I drive from, cuz that would be wrong.
They might put a snowbank in front of your house.
I know you make a good point, never mind, everybody's great.
Don't worry, they can't pick you up over there. Thank you. So that's a good thing to mention at the beginning of our meeting is that, thank you to the Hadley DPW for our streets and the good job that they do on each storm, we do appreciate it. And keep in mind always your safety out there and thanks for a job well done this storm, great job.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And a reminder?
And a reminder to shovel your, to shovel out your fire.
Fire hydrants.
Hydrants.
Lucky this time.
We did.
Kinda faded away, but.
And if you did notice that the Springfield, city of Springfield finds their residents if they don't shovel out their hydrants. So we hate to have to move to that, but it's a matter of safety for everybody, so.
The cheapest form of fire insurance will be for the.
True. All right, so we will go into consent agenda, which has the minutes of not. We have warrants AP nineteen thirty-two and AP nineteen thirty-two S. We have a DPW transfer as field superintendent William Kelly will be transferring from the DPW Highway Department to the DPW Water Distribution Department. And we have a common vehicular license from Subway, three thirty-seven Russell Street, Hadley, Walmart, to Frank Hotel.
It's a transfer from Walmart to.
For what?
So, so William presented as a reservation, I asked Mr. Kelly to. No, 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 it's Subway. Oh, yeah, yeah, moving from, moving from Hampshire Mall to the Mountain Farms Mall.
To the Mountain Farms Mall?
You mean Walmart?
Walmart, yeah.
Okay.
And Walmart and Mountain Farms to Hampshire. They'll be the other way around.
There is a Subway in Walmart now?
There is a Subway.
Oh, that's right, I mean, come out the right inside, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So where's it going now?
There'll be a Subway at Walmart and there'll be a Subway over at the store in Hampshire Mall.
Can you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure.
We'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Obstand.
Any public comments? Any, I, I know where you are. Okay, we have a, we could actually, is that an appointment, right?
Yeah, we could do.
Yeah, we could do. Welcome to Kestrel Land Trust Partnership Grant. We're here to enlighten us on what we have, anything developed with that?
Sure, I, I don't have a whole.
This is Paul Gagnon.
Yeah, Paul Gagnon from Kestrel Land Trust. I don't have as much news as I would hope to have had on the, the state was supposed to issue grants at the end of December and they've been holding off for reasons of their own understanding. So, so we keep, we're being told that it could happen any day now, it's gonna happen, but they can't give us a date when it's gonna happen. So we don't know the results of that grant yet. But there are some, been some other developments I can share with you. We did get, you know, we did get some positive feedback about our grant, so it's, it's encouraging. The other things I can share with you are that we, you know, last time I, I was here, there was some discussion and concern about hunting on conservation lands and confusion about where hunting could happen. And, you know, on DCR lands, on Kestrel lands and other lands. And so what Kestrel has done is we have, on our website, we have put up information about where hunting is allowed in our lands. We made the distinction between land we own, land we don't own. And that should help clarify things, in event that somebody is still confused, they can always call us. On DCR's end, they've asked me to tell you that they are moving forward with trying to define the boundary between Skinner State Park, which because of the will, the wishes of the Skinner family who gave the land to the state, there's no hunting, and the rest of the park upon the range, which hunting is allowed. And so right now they're digging through their paper to find the paper version of where that boundary is. Once they get that figured out, then they can find it on the ground market. So it's moving forward, the state's a little slow and stuff like that because of their bureaucracy, but they did take it seriously and I keep nudging them as well. So hopefully sometime in the next year we'll see something move forward with that.
I appreciate that. But I'm fairly confident that tonight on Facebook, anybody who's connected to David's Facebook page will be made aware of that.
Good, good.
Yeah, I, I mean, the big thing was we got their attention now, they're not just ramming this stuff forward without talking to the town and citizens. That's, that's all I wanted to do originally. And David, you know, there was, there was just a lot of complaints and there was a lot of people being squashed, you know? And it just wasn't right.
Sure.
On the state and not on your end.
Right.
Your end was, we didn't have all the information, you know, along with Sylvia O'Conde's.
Sure, and, you know, I think, you know, we're all on the same page, you know, including DCR and Conte, that, you know, that we wanna support hunting and, and find ways to, you know, conserve more land where people can hunt on it. So, like I said last time, if you have any ideas about land, there's good hunting land that could be conserved, let us know. We can try to bring that to the top of our agenda.
Well, I will say since our, and it might just be coincidence, but since our conversations this summer during deer season, when I was out on Sylvia O'Conde, I had an environmental police officer came up and checked my permit and said, have a nice day and everything was well. Didn't get chased off this year, so good news.
Excellent, good, good. Sometimes all you have to do is talk to people and figure things out. Another thing I can share with you is that, that when we brought the, when we brought the, the question of the Hadley watershed lands upon the range to state in terms of the grant, they, 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 it is their position that that land is, is protected under Article ninety-seven. Now, it still can be used for the grant, it's gonna be worth less for the grant in terms of its match value, but we have other sources of match that we can apply, so we're still gonna come up with the same amount of conservation in the end. But I just thought I should let you know that they do consider that Article ninety-seven.
It's the town owned land.
That's the town owned land, yeah. And it's just because it's, they look at any kind of land that was conserved for the purpose of water supply protection, regardless of when it was conserved as falling under Article ninety-seven. That's their position, it's, it could be argued in a court, but that's been their position throughout the state from what I understand. So it's still applicable, certainly the acreage is gonna count, be very helpful to completing this project and will be some match value in terms of dollars if we put a conservation restriction on it that creates affirmative public access to that property, which currently doesn't exist. That's all I have. Hopefully in the next week or so, I'll have something to say about the state grant.
Well, just let us know, we're more than happy to have you back.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, anytime.
I have one other question, just, do you ever do timber management plans or anything along those lines with that kinda land? Just to.
Yeah, yeah, and, and that would be something that, that I assume that you would want to do there, be able to, be able to get some value out of, out of timber there periodically. And that is something that we do on a lot of conservation land.
Suggestions made, one of the things we're always trying to do is find opportunities to work with the university and engage with their students. And suggestions have been made a couple of times that maybe we could engage with a forestry management undergrad, grad student or whatever, who could be vetted to come up with a.
I guess we can actually get it, you can get a forestry management plan through the plan, through the state for free. Is my understanding, I don't know if you're familiar with those plans.
Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure how you apply for that, but that's what I've heard.
And, I mean, you could do it either way. It, it, you know, if you did forestry out there under a conservation restriction, you'd need to have a plan, but you'd wanna have a plan anyway, so.
I think the idea was to try to find a way to work with, John Edwards has suggested it a couple of times and we're hoping to try to, see if we can work something out in the mass.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, a good way to.
Just get the opportunity to have hands on.
We have done some logging out there in past years.
Long time ago.
Long time ago, but I do remember us doing that.
Yeah.
As everything, things need to get overgrown and taken care of here, so.
Do we have to go work with conservation on that, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a lot more people involved, but even with the fire access roads and the whole county roads that still go through that mountain, you know, we, we periodically maintain those throughout the years, the last thirty-five years that I know. We've been up there a few times.
Yeah, because every now and then there'll be a little fire that crops up up there in some ways.
The fires we had really opened everybody's eyes on, on access and where the roads were and what, what we could do and what we couldn't do up there. And, you know, it really needs to be maintained.
Definitely. All right, look forward to you coming back, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you. Water abatement nineteen grand Oak Town Road. Certainly, if you all have looked at this, it doesn't look like, it's not recommended for a rebatement. Evidently, they had gotten some wrong information and never would bother to go back and check their meter when the irrigation system was watering every day from three AM to six AM. So unfortunately, it's not a town fault, so therefore. Went through the meter, so unfortunately, it doesn't look like there, we can allow this abatement. But does anybody have any other thoughts or questions on it, or, or does it entertain a motion?
Motion to deny the water abatement for nineteen grand oak. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Obstand. Aye.
I think I looked that property.
Oh, no, I was thinking about this.
Okay.
And we have a community preservation committee special employee designation status. What would that be, David?
Well, right now we have a number of special municipal employees, which relaxes some of the standards under the state ethics commission, particularly having to do with appearing before the body that you're a member of and representing a client. We have a member of the CPA who does that on a regular basis. He's requested that the CPA committee be designated as special municipal employee in order to not violate the state ethics law by continuing to do the work that he does.
What does he do?
This is Randy Isner.
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, so the designation is to the position of the individual, so you'd be designating the entire. entire Community Preservation Act committee special municipal employees. Select them by statute or automatically are special. As are the planning board and a number of other...
Yes, we are.
As a number of other committees in the town hall. So this... There is every reason to do this, no reason not to do this.
Make a motion. Do we accept the recommendation from Mr. Iser?
Second.
No, not from Mr. Iser, for the...
For the...
For the candidate, but his recommendation, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then our three favorite topics. Senior Center, library, and fire substation updates.
No change orders yet.
No change orders yet. I think we're okay. Anything on the senior center, which would entail... David, you want to say what's been going on here at town hall?
Sure. Construction is underway. So far, there's been zero issues discovered that we weren't expecting. So that's been good. So it's on budget, on schedule so far. And I guess tomorrow, they'll be moving that 4,000 pound or 6,000 pound safe out of the front office there. And they got the floor braced up in the basement, ready to go. And hopefully within a week or so, but then it'll be wrapped up.
So that safe is moving out?
Yes, to make room for parking wreck. And I know that Chris at the DPW authorized Gary to work the weekend, so that way he can get some of the stuff done in here when people are out of their offices. So hopefully disturb things a little less.
Are they putting that safe up for bid or...
That I do not know.
There was a lot of discussion about that. And I was asked if it's going to be taken out by the contractor and is it his or is it going on a town vehicle and we're disposing of it or whatever?
Town vehicle is not declared surplus at this point.
Okay. I'd like to see it go on a municipal or something, you know, if we can put it somewhere.
There's some doors on that that are heavier than that.
Well, the age of it, it may be some value, antique value, you know, I don't know.
Definitely have somebody take a look at that.
Yeah. Maybe the auction bar, maybe they're interested in still municipal. Maybe you'd get more of that.
Yeah, we might put it somewhere and then transfer it to Hooker School or something like that when we do the auction for the auction off all the senior stuff.
That is pretty heavy for...
Keep moving.
Wrong.
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
I'm not sure.
We took an old safe from the garage when my father-in-law passed and put it down in our basement. We had to mow it with a wrecker to get it into the basement. It's never coming out again.
Yeah, I bought and mowed one of the basements here.
Okay, so that's that. Anything else, David, going on? They started also on the assessor's office, correct?
Yep. Dan's been out, so the goal is to get the wall up and enclosed, I guess, this weekend or early next week before he returns, so that way it's interrupting his activities as little as possible. And, I mean, that's really the two major areas, getting the safe out and getting the wall up. And after that, it's a matter of moving things.
Yeah, we've been moving offices already, setting up phone systems, getting the wireless network to work for all the computers that have been moved. People are pulling together. Everybody understands what needs to get done. A lot of people are taking this as an opportunity to clean out their offices, so.
Here, here.
Here, here.
And David, how are you finding?
Do we need to just put a shredder box in your office by chance?
Yeah. Volcano, so I could just throw things in.
That's why we have to pass the human resources manager to move into David's office as well. He's got to share that space and...
There we go.
That's probably the lead.
I know. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on the senior center, looking to break ground?
Yeah, yeah. We're just basically right now, we're doing some things, looking at the sign that says Hadley Senior Center. That's the only debate going around right now a little bit, but waiting for those contracts. Bids to come in, should come in. I guess it's two weeks, like...
Two weeks.
Yeah, they're due. So a week from today, they're due. And then two weeks from today, we will vote as the select board on a contractor and then move forward and, you know, break ground March 1st or, you know, soon thereafter, as soon as they can mobilize and get to the site, so that's good.
We've got to file sub bids, so...
Okay. You might know more about the bids coming in than I do right now, yeah.
Sounds good.
And I just, I don't know if we've heard anything additional from Colebrook that you want to share about our negotiation with price on Most Holy Redeemer or what we want to make a statement there? No?
So, yes...
I don't know if there's any updates.
Yeah, so the next part of this is lease agreement. We had a proposal...
Yeah.
Which we approved last week. Lease agreement is the next legal document that we'll receive. I talked to Colebrook today about that, so they're preparing that and it'll be reviewed by their attorneys. Once we get it, we'll show it to ours. And I already gave them our attorney's contact information, so maybe they'll do that anyways. So that's the next formality in this process.
So we're proceeding as the original plan?
As you voted, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does that insurance cost the same work of liability or...?
No, it's just a matter of putting the dimes on as additional...
Probably had enough coverage.
Moving ahead as stated last week.
Yeah, we can just keep the schedule moving. We got a lot of momentum. I mean, David's on a lot here to keep that momentum going. And I think if we can keep that going, we just can really make some progress on these projects, so I think keeping to the schedule is key.
Get there. Anything from the library side?
No, I have been library voted. They approved, you know, their payment, you know, as we heard last time, so. Once all the moving parts get moving, then next big thing will be the demolition, right?
Sounds good. Yeah, there's a subfire station committee meeting on Monday night. We picked the colors and finalizing our efforts for next Tuesday. We go before the planning board for presentation of our plans. And Drew was at... John was at our...
Yes.
Taped our...
Great meeting. Good choice.
Good choice.
Red on the top, red on the bottom.
So, yeah, red roof, which is...
I like it. It's a red denture from my house.
Oh, good.
I'll see it every day.
It really looks... It really looks sharp. It's got two-tone different grays with the red on the bottom and red on the roof and white trim. Very great. We also talked about when we make our presentation about why we chose to put the building where it is to maximize the use of the whole property. Also, behind the building to the north, it's kind of wetlands there, so it's really not quite buildable for anything per se. So the most we would maximize would be the rest of the property there. So if you had taken and put in that building like we've been questioned about, to have a straight shot across to Stockbridge, well, they're not always going to come out of the fire station and go straight across to Stockbridge. I mean, we're looking at going north or going south on 47. So they actually thought where they placed it would make whoever's coming out of there take a look to see.
Safer.
Safer. It would be safer to put it there instead of just assuming you were going to make a straight shot across. We talked about the barn, the use of the barn. So maybe after this year, we would probably even want to use it as part of town property because of being able to store some of the things that could be stored in there, which we own as a town. So that was brought up the other night also.
What do we put in a barn?
Well, you never know what we got for equipment that could go in a barn.
Well, I thought the idea was we were going to try to get rid of some of our...
Well, we are.
Which we have.
But you never know what can go in there from other departments and stuff. So it was just a thought and something for us to think about.
Somebody could lay a foundation, put it in a basketball court.
Yes, absolutely.
I was going to say, if you want to see how you can store equipment in a barn like that, I can show them. It's some on-hand experience. I have to take everything out, I have to get the one thing in the middle.
You know that, it's like a garage.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we talked about also when not in use after the project, the construction area, what we would see on that other property until we decided what the use of the property would be used for at some future date. Probably hay. We don't want to put anything on that property that would probably require pesticides or anything else because we've just now, you know, got a clean thing of worms and things like that of that. So they thought hay would be a good option. That way, it would be growing, it would be cut down, so that would be a thought for the rest of that property.
Hay or straw can be maintained pretty easily that way, yeah.
Correct. And it would look decent and be kept up.
It's something that the DPW doesn't have to model because we could get a farmer to come in and cut it twice a season or something.
Correct, yeah. So that was our discussion the other night. And seeing them on...
Well, may the forestry with you next week?
Tuesday. Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it.
I have no doubt.
Put that on my calendar, that'll be fun to watch.
David, do you want to do anything from your town administration before?
Well, there's not a lot to talk about because I've been working almost exclusively on the budget and the annual town meeting board. We talked about that already today. The other thing I've been working a lot with Linda and David Iser, our chief financial advisor, stretching the loans in order to borrow enough so that we have enough to support the various projects that are going forward and equipment purchases that are going forward, but not so much that we're overburdening the taxpayers. So it's a series of finely tuned borrowings that are going to be occurring throughout the spring and summer. I sent out a save the date reminder of July 10th, where we will have to meet with the chief financial advisor, approve the loan documents, the loan bid results for the second set of borrowings. We'll be doing additional meetings in September, but not thinking too far ahead. But we have, we've been working very well with bond counsel and just today, we got a bond counsel approval for the first set of borrowings. So that's very good news indeed. The reason why that's good news is because we have a lot of information that we have to collect from a lot of departments and they've been cooperating and being very timely in their return of information, so that's the other thing that's been keeping me going. Just a reminder that tomorrow's the last day to take out papers for our election. And November and February 19th is when those papers are due. Annual election's April 9th, town meeting is May 2nd, and that brings... And tomorrow, we'll be spitting that E and R grade.
For the...
Laserfish.
Laserfish.
Laserfish, yeah. It's pretty much ready to go, just a matter of inputting the information and hitting the send button.
Anybody on the select board have anything they want to...
Yeah, I have one thing that didn't make it onto the agenda, but we received an email somewhere along the line. I think we missed, there must have been a communication that had to do with an election for the Metropolitan Planning Organization for the Northern Tier candidate. So an MPO is a transportation-based group, so apparently it's federally required, which I didn't know until I Googled it. But it's a regional transportation policymaking organization and they always request representation from local government as well as regional transit operators and state transportation agencies. So apparently, there are three individuals in our Northern Tier that put their names out there and each municipality has one vote. Those individuals are Jeffrey Seer from South Hadley. He's newly elected official in South Hadley. Lynn Greismer, who is the newly elected head of the Amherst Town Council. She did win by a fairly large margin. I think Joyce Christian and I had some conversation with her.
And talked.
And you've talked to her before. And then Nicole LaChapelle, who's the mayor of East Hampton. So the election kind of came and went, but apparently it resulted in a three-way tie and they realized that we hadn't voted. So a request has been made that if we're comfortable that we...
Or the deciders.
Yeah, or there may be other municipalities too, which is pointed out, like, hey, did you guys vote? So David was kind enough to find the information on the candidates. And just very quickly, I can tell you that Jeffrey in South Hadley has served on the Appropriations Committee, Capital Planning Committee, and School Building Committees, and he's the Water Superintendent for Fire District Number One, okay? Lynn Greismer is actually... She has a pretty extensive background in economic development. She was the head of the Donahue Institute, the executive director for many, many years. And she's worked on or served on a variety of town, let's see, Public Works, Fire Station Advisory Committee, Fire Station Study Committee.
She's been on for many years?
Well, she's just newly elected to the Amherst Council, so she hasn't been on the select board. But she participated in the Greater Boston Regional Economic Compact, the Girl Scouts, and so she's had a fair amount of experience. But again, most of it being really, you know, a couple of decades working, heading up the Donahue Institute and all the job creation and economic development. And then Nicole LaChapelle, prior to becoming mayor of East Hampton ZDA, Holyoke Chamber of Commerce, Children's Museum, Women's Fund. So, you know, personally, I'm a little bit biased because I know Lynn better and, you know, Nicole, I think would be great, but I would think she would have her hands full just being the mayor. You know, they have some initiatives going on over there. Jeffrey, I just don't know that well, but it doesn't look like there's an awful lot of any real tie to transportation, so.
The mayor of North Hampton is on the... Is on the MPO already, correct? He's a member?
I don't know that. I don't... He may very well be.
She said maybe he is.
Could be.
Is this part of Pioneer Valley Planning?
No, it's a state... Yeah. So it's MPO Activities Group, part of the Office of Transportation Planning for the Commonwealth. So, I mean, I'd be comfortable recommending that Lynn represent us. I don't know how many of those is...
I can make a motion that we recommend Lynn for the MPO.
Okay, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes. Would you like to mark the mark?
Yeah. David, do you mind signing that in tomorrow or I'm happy to scan?
Not at all.
I'll just put town of Hadley.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? We're good? Motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
Happy Valentine's Day to all of our sweethearts.